Good evening and welcome. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school business, the school district's business, and is not to be considered a community, public community meeting. However, there is time provided for public participation during the meeting as indicated herein by law 0165.1B. Should be noted that the Board of Education members received their agenda several days prior to the actual meeting, thus they have had considerable opportunity to study and ask questions. The Board will hold their next regular meeting Tuesday, September 17th, 2024, right here in the Woodbridge High School library. Guests and participants are asked to silence their cell phones and put them away for the duration of the meeting. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Webber, Mrs. Heffernan.
Here.
Mr. Carlo.
Here.
Mr. Lydic.
Here.
Mrs. Markman.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I have no public participation and we will move to the auditor's state presentation.
So at this time, Katie Simo from the Ohio State Auditor's Office would like to make a presentation in front of the Board. Katie Simo, you would...
It comes as all good things. You know, the auditor's is obviously the bad rap. I don't want to say anyone auditor's. Unfortunately, you're stuck with us, so there is that. My name is Katie Simo, the Northeast Ohio Representative for Auditor's State Keith Faber's office. I am very happy to be here this evening to present the Auditor's State Award for Fiscal Year 23 to Woodbridge, or Woodbridge Local Schools and the Board. Just a little bit of information about the award and what it means. So we don't give out any of these out. We've audited about 6,000 clients in the state of Ohio, and so that makes this a very pursuit of support. We don't get to come out and give out a lot of these presentations and say, congratulations, you guys got a clean audit. So that makes this a huge, huge deal. You should be very proud and, you know, give yourselves a little pat on the back and everything. So just kind of going quickly through some of the criteria that you guys all have to get completely right on to get this award is that everything must be filed on time with our office, no extensions or anything like that, no ethics referrals, no question costs, lack of timely report submission, bank reconciliation issues, failure to obtain a single audit, findings for recovery, and making sure that you guys have all your public meetings like you are right now. So we just want to say thank you. This award represents all the hard work that you guys do every day by doing these meetings and listening to community members. We know that is a tough job. We appreciate that you guys put in all the hard work to be able to get this award and doing everything right by getting a clean audit. And so we just want to recognize the superintendent, Mr. Durok, my gosh, Doug Durok, is that correct?
Lydic.
Lydic.
My apologies. As well as Treasurer Morehouse, thank you so much for all the hard work that you guys do, takes the team, and we know that all of you guys participate and make sure that this gets done.
Did you say the superintendent?
Yeah.
That's Nicole.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, no. Take him, take him, Dave.
He's taking many pills tonight.
I don't want that job.
My apologies, my apologies, I am so sorry.
That's why we hired her.
Yes, my apologies.
I always catch those stakes.
So congratulations, thank you. And on behalf of Auditor's State Keith Faber, congratulations on your 2023 Auditor's State Award. Do you mind taking a quick photo of everybody as well with the award, by chance?
Okay. Want us to just come over and stand behind you?
Thank you, Mr. Morehouse.
Yes. This is not his first award here at Woodbridge, so we're, you know, he's a little, Mr. Morehouse is a little...
Well, it's not...
I'm so sorry, I apologize. The themes are valid, I apologize. I'm so sorry. I was wrong. Picture about this. I appreciate that. All right, everyone smile. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And also these photos off to you. Thank you. Thank you. You're 22, sorry. Thank you. Thanks.
Well, and I would like to just recognize Mr. Morehouse because this, as she stated, isn't his first clean audit. I think there's been multiple, 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 and I just want to express my appreciation for keeping us that way.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and I know there's going to be many more, too. No pressure.
Well, as I always say, it's really, I mean, it's not just the fiscal department, it's truly an auditor, the entire district, and all staff truly tries to do what they can to do things right the way it's supposed to be done, and I just thank all of them. You know, I especially thank, you know, since this fiscal year 23, Beth Sari and Christie Weaver, Jill Limerick now in the office, help go through it, so I thank them, but it's really, like I say, it's a staff award, entire district-wide, it's not just my office, so if anyone's out there watching, and staff members, thank you, I do appreciate the help very much. Okay.
You train your office well.
I'm done now.
Good, I agree with that.
All right, I will move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Lydic.
Aye.
Mrs. Heffernan.
Aye.
Mr. Carlo.
Aye.
Mrs. Markman.
Aye.
And that moves us over to the superintendent's reports.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make one more mention about Tom, too, and so thankful that Katie came in because it is such a big deal, and it just shows that, you know, his financial management is excellent, and we are in really good hands with him steering the ship. Even though we often refer to him as the no fun police, he is that way for a reason, so it's very, very honored to have that award. Welcome back to the 24-25 school year. It has been a pretty smooth start to the year, lots of smiling faces, kids excited to be here, teachers excited to be back, and that is in large part to our building leadership. They have just had an excellent rollout for this year, and going over to the elementary school, moving that many kids through dismissal and arrival is, it's no small feat, and it's as if they've been doing it without missing a beat this summer, so it was really great to see. I wanted to share a little bit, too, about registration. So our registrar, Angie Hall, and our people services admin assistant, Bonnie George, have been working very hard getting all of our kids in, and I just wanted to share some numbers with you. So before school started this year, so starting in May up until the first day of school, we registered 253 new students.
Wow.
From the first day of school until just today, we've registered 42 students. So we have about 295 new students to start the year, and just for some perspective, last year, we had 240 start before the school year and then only 24 start after that first day of school. So last year, we ended with about 1921 for our ADM, and this year, we're starting right around 1970. So we've had some growth there, and they are managing it well and getting everything in, and our families are having a smooth start, which is really great. I also wanted to share, too, I'm not sure if everybody's aware, of Senate Bill 29. So that just passed last month, and that has to do with parental notice of any technology providing, provider service that houses student data, and we're to inform parents of what that looks like. And so if anybody's hearing about that in the news, there's going to start to be more press coverage, we have to share notification out by the end of October. So I just want to let everybody know, as we work as a district team to identify all of those different resources, we'll be sending that out soon. Any questions about that? No? Okay. All right, and then we have some national champions to recognize tonight. Mr. Di Tomaso is going to come up and talk about FCC LA.
It does seem like over, you know, these last 10 years, FCC LA seems to keep coming up, right? But, so we actually narrowed it down, we thought, you know what, we're not going to, we're not going to give you accolades until you get a national champion. Turns out, they did. So we are welcoming today, well, first things first, so Leah Norris. So Leah Norris has been doing this for 26 years, we just did the math.
Wow.
Yeah. Thank you, Leah. And also, the group that, there's a, there are a couple other students who are actually playing soccer right now, and one is at tennis, so we'll talk about them in a second. So first things first, come on up. So the group that's coming up, we have Riley Monable, we have Gracie Springer, Haley Walker, and, yeah, and then we're not, as far as soccer goes, we have Izzy Howell and Izzy Skebby, and then also playing tennis is Clark Gregory, so. So Izzy, Rachel LaGuardia is also a senior at school right now who was unable to come back. Izzy, Rachel, and Riley earned gold and 10th place, it's because of the empty bowl event, helps a family promise of Summit County and raised over $10,000 this past year. The Gracie Springer and Clark Gregory playing tennis earned gold and first place, working with second graders, teaching them nutrition, fitness, good mental health practices, measuring and fractions, culminating with all six second grade classes coming to prepare healthy food at the high school, which they definitely were at the high school, and they were definitely running around the high school for sure. I saw them, they're tiny, and they were running around the high school, so.
They were running.
Yeah, sure they were. And Izzy Howell and Haley have gold and 5th place promoting FCC LA and making sure we're involved in our state national programs, highlighting all that Woodbridge Chapter does, and that's what Haley does. And then Riley Yakow, who's currently at school, she is state representative for community service, and she had the most service hours in Ohio with 273.5 hours.
Wow.
So this group is, and, you know, and again, we've heard it over and over again, but this is the truth, this group is in the whole school, everybody's excited about it, everybody knows about FCC LA, but also, you know, they're involved in a number of different activities and sports throughout the year, so it is exciting, and every morning, I get to see these guys come in and talk with them, and they're always smiling, they're always looking, they're in extra, it's in the morning early, it's late school, that kind of thing, so it's super exciting to have them. Also, just be prepared, Nicole and Tom, well, Tom just got the award, the auditor, so on July 5th and 9th, Orlando, Florida is the national championship in 2025, just for the record.
That's okay, that's closer.
Yeah, right.
Anyway, we thank your families for being here, this is, you know, obviously, this is a team effort, as you know, when you talk to Leah and most of these guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I have just one question, what was it like to compete at the national level?
It was pretty fun, on top of being fun, we learned a lot, everyone, like, there's so many people there and a lot of judges, so you have to have really good public speaking skills, and that was something that we learned. And, yeah, on top of learning a lot, we also just had a lot of fun being there and being with all our friends.
So did you make it on top of the stage, then?
So the top three, well, the top 10 make it, and then the top three are announced. So Gracie's, Gracie and Claire were announced, and then the top 10 just get to go walk on the stage.
I've got to see a picture of being on the stage, too. So if somebody has it, you've got to send it my way.
Our non-grain pictures, well.
That's good, yes, it's...
Can I also give a plug to FCC LA for doing the toy drive every year, helping out heart for the city and getting all the toys from all over the district that, to kids who would not have anything for Christmas, and they do a really great job every year. I want to thank you all for that.
All right, thank you. All right, and then usually at this time, we would look, or turn the other way and let you just leave and take pictures, but I'm going to ask if you would stay during Mr. Morehouse's presentation, because he's going to honor you again, and he's also going to honor some of our other accomplishments that we have in districts. So if you are able to stay, that would be great, if not, we won't hold it against you if you leave.
Mr. Morehouse. Okay, just a couple quick things. One thing I want to give a shout out to, Vinnie Spitalin and his crew, so I think everyone knew, one of the big projects we had going on this summer was remodeling the 1961 bathrooms down the hallway here, and male and female, they really came out nice. We'd planned for $50,000, we had a resolution from you guys for 75 for cost overruns. Vinnie did, and his crew did some of the stuff in-house that we weren't sure we were going to have to, so he actually came in under budget at $38,000. So it was quite the achievement, too, I just want to compliment him and his crew. Couple other things, something that's, a couple things that just came through real quickly, Senate Bill 308 is kind of being introduced out there, this could have kind of a deficit effect on us, it's effect how they count the 20 mil floor in emergency levies, and that could, we'll find out more as we go along here this next year, but that could be, like I said, detrimental to us. We've talked about for a number of years, digitalizing records, and we started the process last week, they came and picked up 633 boxes, and they're about two-thirds of the way through, and this will probably take a year project. What they will do is they will go through, see what we have to save, what we can digitize, what can be disposed of according to our record retention policy, but I just kind of want everybody to know that did start the process. One other piece of note, before I get to my presentation here, this just came through this afternoon, I'm not saying it's definitely true, I saw a news article, I'm hoping it's true, the State Board of Education, it's kind of been going out there, that the State Board of Education doesn't have any money, and one of the things they were looking to do to raise money was increase the cost for licensure. So for teachers, superintendents, principals, myself, the cost was going to go from 200 to 350 dollars. Well, the state controlling board, according to this article, again, I'm not verifying anything, so this is just rumor, but I'm really hoping it is true, state controlling board gave the State Board of Education additional $4 million today, and so they're hoping to keep that licensure cost down to back to the 400, or, excuse me, the $200. So that's what we're hoping is true, again, we'll find out more as we go through it, but we'll just have to see. All right, so, one thing I just kind of want to go through, every August, I'll kind of come up here and just kind of go quickly through a year review of what the year was like for us. So what we always start with is, you know, I'm the money guy, so we start with our cash, money in, money out, right? So beginning of July 1 last year, we started a balance of 16.8 million, we, our general, and this is all general fund, by the way, revenues of 34 million, our general fund expenditures were 30 million, giving us a cash balance of $20,427,000 at June 30. So what we always look at is what derives our revenue, okay? Unfortunately, Woodbridge has won 71% of our revenue is from local taxes. We don't like to be that way, but it is what it is, we're one of the, you know, we've always been one of the 20 lowest funded schools in the state, that's why you're always going to see it that way with Woodbridge, and we'll get into, again, a few minutes more, state sources for our general fund were 16%, our federal only get 1%, and other local sources make up 12% of our revenues. What do we spend our money on? We are a service organization, all right? We don't produce, as I always say, we don't make widgets, so we don't have cost in supplies, we don't have cost in equipment, things like that, we're a service organization, we teach kids, right? So where's our biggest expenditures always going to be? Personnel. 22% for fringe benefits, 55% of salaries, so personnel costs is 77%. The Mendoza line, we always kind of looked at was 80% above or below. Couple years ago, we were actually above 80%. Now, when you look at that, all right, we were 80%, we're at 81, 82, we're down to 77. Does that mean our, the cost of our salaries and fringe benefits have gone down? Obviously not. What that means is some of our other expenditures, especially purchase services, that cost has gone up. That used to be about 10 to 12%, but ever, I mean, let's face it, ever since COVID, one of the prices done, and this is one of places hitting home, it's hitting home in supplies, but really hitting home down here in purchase services. So that's why, again, cost of personnel hasn't gone down, but the percentage of our own expenditures has because other expenditures have gone up. All right, so how does that compare to the rest of the county? So what I did is I took, I looked at everyone's five-year forecast, I don't have access to actual hard numbers, but I can look at their five-year forecast. So what I do is I look at their local tax percentage of all their general fund revenue and also cost of personnel. You see average countywide is 58% for the tax revenue, we're at 71%. Is that higher? Obviously, yes, it is. Are we highest in the county? No. If you look at Copley's, 81%, Hudson's 72, Nardoni's right with us, 71, Revere 77, and Twinsburg 75, so we're not the highest. What that's showing is, well, if you look at, I'm sorry, Akron, 34%, you look at Mogadish 29%, Barberton 31%, what that shows and the way the state is funded, because properties in these communities have a lower tax value. So what that does is the state, the way the formula works, when you have higher ability to create tax revenue with your property values high, they give you less money. That's why the Copleys, you know, the Twinsburgs and us are such a high percentage because our property values are so high, the state, the way the formula works out, we have the opportunity to get more money because of the high property values, so the state gives us less money. Versus the other districts that are lower, their property values aren't as low or aren't as high, so they generate less revenue from levies, okay? Now, let's look at the cost of personnel. Again, we're 77%, the average across the county is 79%, we are in a good standing with that. I don't want to ever get into the high 80s because if you start to run out of money, okay, if you start to run out of money, you can possibly for, you know, push back fixing something, or ordering supplies, or whatever it is, or ordering broken equipment, but if you're high in your high 80s or so in cost of personnel, and you start to have money trouble, where are your funding going to be cut? It's personnel, it's jobs, that's what we don't want that to happen. So that's why I want to, you know, always keep that below that 80% if possible. Okay, one thing I've never really talked about for you is, yes, we talked about where the money goes between salaries, fringes, and purchase service supplies like that, but what departments are we spending the money on? So I kind of wanted to go through this a little bit. Instruction, what our instruction is, is our classroom expenses, our teaching staff, our paraprofessionals, our gifted people, where that money's going to, it's in the actual classroom, okay? Related instructional services, this is your occupational therapy, your physical therapy, your libraries, guidance, that's where those costs are for. District support is your administration, your legal services, overhead that takes to run the entire district, no matter how big or small you are, you're going to have that there. Fiscal, obviously, is my staff, but it's not just that, it's cost for like the county, we pay the county a lot of money to do services for us, your audit services, things like that, that's all that falls into here. Operational plans and service, it's your custodial maintenance, but more into that is when we fix things, the cost to fix them, not just the personnel, but the material, the services we have to purchase to run the operation, that's what operational plans and services are. Transportation, obviously, is our drivers and our transportation people, but we have to contract out for transportation sometimes. Last month, the Board approved the lieu of transportation, that's where that's, those thousands of dollars come through here. Extracurricular, cost for our coaches, those, cost for our coaches don't actually come out of athletics, it comes out of the general fund, so the cost for your coaches, supplementals we have come out of there. Other just miscellaneous things and transfers advances, just to keep our funds in a positive approach so that we can do that throughout the year. Now, when you look at it, okay, when you look at all these things, instruction, 60% of our costs go to instruction in the classroom, and that's where it should be. Again, we're personnel, we teach kids, that is where your hiring cost should be. We also have related services, they're working with kids, they're not considered instruction, but they're, they are, okay, but it's just the way it's coded, it's not considered instruction. So when you look at the two together, 60% of our expenses go towards the students. All right, not general fund, but I just kind of want to mention, we've participated in 17 federal programs last year, the big one concerning one is ESAR, so after about four years of ESAR, that ends next month. So all the things, personnel, we've used for ESAR, they're coming back to the general fund. That's why during the five-year forecast, I said, you know, starting this year, next year, more next year, is when we're going to start deficit spending because ESAR is going away. State programs, we've got five of them that we've participated in, this one, two of them to note here, one, we, between Mr. Unix and Mr. Hosford and a group of committees, wrote a bunch of different safety grants that we, and again, we talked about that a little bit, that's ending. Student want success, this is what Governor Dewine put in when he first became governor. Just to note, when he first put that in, we were getting about $500,000, and with the fair school funding, one of the trade-offs is a lot of the money went away, so now we're getting about $60,000 to $70,000 instead of $500,000. But between all our federal and state programs, it's over $3 million, almost $4 million in revenue we took from all those programs. Okay, just one, a couple of things I go through here, enrollment, we always kind of look where we're at, you can see kind of back in fiscal year 19 and 20, we kind of went below 1,800 students. So what they're funding us for now is 1,861, we're kind of more leveling off right there. We always like to say we're around 1,900 because they can come and go at any time. So this is what the state's funding, funded for last year was 1,861 students. Okay, this is always a fun one I like to do, it's not so much the financial piece, but what did we do with all that money? What happened in the district? Sometimes it's not always the money, what did the school district do? All right, so, if anyone recognized that logo, it's New Era, that's a hat logo, okay? It's the New Era hat. Do we get new hats? No, but Woodbridge was in a new era last year, got a new superintendent, right? We're in a new leadership. As I always tell everybody, this board had the foresight to hire from within for our new superintendent, because if you wouldn't have, somebody else would have. So we were under a new era. One thing I always want to bring up, passage of issue 15, I want to thank again our community. We passed that renewal levy 60-40. 20% is a big number. When you look at some of our brethren out there, one district I know of in this county doesn't usually have issues passing their levies, and only they pass it by 2%. There's other districts in other counties nearby that their renewal levies failed, so I can't thank our community enough for coming out, supporting our students and our staff, it's very much appreciated. Okay, what is this? It's an air conditioner, it's a window air conditioner. We did facility upgrades, okay? Mrs. Norris liked this one. So three years ago, we started this project with replacing the air conditioning rooftop units over the high school because they were about to go bad, so it couldn't have come at a better time. We finished that up this year. We also, at the beginning of this last year, and just recently finished, every single room in this high school is now air conditioned. So we can say every classroom we have campus-wide has air conditioning. So it's a feat that this school needed a long time ago, we're finally able to get it, we had spent a lot of money to get it done, but I think everyone is very appreciative of what we have there with the air conditioning. The other facility upgrade I wanted to mention, the throws area we did for track and field back on the, the practice field back here, we put that new one in, it really looks nice. All right, what are these? Okay, hard to see, those are speakers. What did we do with that? Sound systems, the auditorium, we got the brand-new sound system last year in the auditorium, you could finally hear some things. I know Mr. Morgan was really hoping sometimes maybe a match might fall in that building, other part of the building, kind of burn it down, we can finally hear there now. The other sound system was the football field, you know, we got the brand-new turf two years ago, redid the track, got that beautiful scoreboard, you couldn't hear for a darn, okay? So we got the new sound system in there, no longer do we have to stand here and hear Walsh and CBC down there, they can hear us. So that's always appreciated, we can get that over there. All right, K through 12 math textbooks, Mr. Morgan had that big committee to select the new textbooks, or the new math textbooks, not the new textbooks, and he raised about it, how everyone liked it, and it just, it's really helping our staff, and I think it's really going to help the students as they go along, because it was a couple years' process to get that going, and we finally got that on last year. All right, I mentioned a few minutes ago, safety grants, safety upgrades, what we did, we got a lot of new cameras to put out in the buildings, new safety cameras, and wasn't nearly the big expense, but it's really kind of a cool thing, in each building now, we have a license scanner, so as visitors come in, you hand over your driver's license, they'll scan it to see if you're allowed in the building or not, because you may not be, and for those that are, it will print off a badge, and you can put it on, so if we have people walking out in the building and staff sees that sticker, they know you've been approved and it's okay for you to be in the building, just another safety measure we have in the school now. Last year, we opened up Edwards Field in conjunction with the city of Coppa Falls, we had the grand opening, and I think Mrs. Harrington will vouch that it's really nice to have all that green space out there, because it was a concrete jungle for years when we built that building, and now we've got the kids a green space. Finally, championships, all right, so, you know, usually I get up here and I kind of ask everybody, what championships did we win? I couldn't just recite it, so I had to put a whole slide up here for this one, okay? Championships, we'll go through these, MAC championships, our league, the Metro Athletic Conference, we had six MAC championships between, or team-wise, between high school and middle school, we had two sectional championships, five district championships, three regional championships, state placements, all right? We had boys and girls cross both, our competition chair team, and two FCC LA groups have finished runner-up in the state. We also, three groups took third place from FCC LA in the state, and one of our FCC LA teams took fourth. teams took fourth. Our dance team had two fifth-place finishes in the state. Team championships, as we all know, our girls' track team, back-to-back two years in a row, won the state championship. Individual champions or placers, Stephen Duffy, second in the state wrestling runner-up. FCC LA had two groups that finished the state championships. And if I'm correct, if I'm wrong, please correct me, but this is what I believe, you guys. Our girls' track team, 4 of 800, finished state champions. Reese Freeman ran three state championships last year, one across and a track, 800 meters and 1,600 meters. And finally, our national awards. As you just all heard, we had one team took 10th place in the nation, one took 5th, and we had one group finish national champions over the entire country. And I have to say also, shame on me if I don't bring up our Unified Sports Program. They're one of two schools in the state of Ohio to receive the ESPN National Banner Award, and the only school in the state of Ohio to earn ESPN honor. In fact, they had a little commercial about Woodbridge on Instagram. So it was really kind of a cool thing. You can see what our student athletes are doing. And not just student, I say student and athletes, because it's truly what they are. It's not just in athletics, it's FCC LA, it's academics, all the things that our kids are achieving, it band, everything. So it's for a small school, because we're still relatively small school, students, you guys have done a quite nice job out there. You're all to be congratulated. Thank you for putting us on the map. So that's what I all have for you tonight. I got it in less than 37 minutes. So any questions about anything that I've shown you? Okay. All right. Mr. President, that's my presentation.
Do you mind if we take a five-minute?
Go ahead.
We'll take a five-minute recess. If you'd like to leave, you can. If not, you are welcome to stay. Thank you for being here tonight.
A motion to approve the treasurer's report, please.
I'll move.
Second. Roll call. Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Laydick?
Aye.
That brings us to six. Board of Education reports, correspondence and updates, and committee reports. Nothing yet?
Not yet.
I have, I have one thing to mention for that.
Okay.
For the committee reports. We'll be getting together to do a policy review in the near future, so.
Okay.
They're coming in.
All righty. Seven, the consent resolution. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll move. I'll second.
Roll call. Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Laydick?
Aye.
Eight, personnel. A certificated staff, one through five. I will move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
So I'm just going to highlight a couple areas here. The first one, Lauren McNeil is a new teacher coming to the elementary school. She's great. She's coming from Grove City College, and she's replacing Stacy Kolch, who was a small group instructor last year. And then I also wanted to just draw attention to our homework assistance program at the middle school. This is a great resource for our families to take advantage of. And that schedule is posted at the middle school website.
Roll call, please. Mr. Laydick?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Through five, make sure we get there. The classified staff, one through 10. Get a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second. Discussion.
We've replaced two paraprofessional positions with some really tremendous candidates. They're who we're recommending this evening. We also had Susan Tomei and Jessica Rena support our Jump Start Program, which is the partnership we have with Summit Education Initiative to get our kindergarten students ready for the school year. And then why not highlight Jillian Garland, who is one of our paraprofessionals here that serves the Reset Program. She, we're recommending her to have time for working with our Positive Behavior Intervention Support Group, and then also her leave of absence so that she can do our student teaching. So she's coming back after that, but we're really fortunate to have her.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Laydick?
Aye.
Leads us to C supplemental contracts, one through four. Get a motion, please?
I'll move.
One second. Discussion.
We're disappointed to lose Sandro. He was a great coach, but his day-to-day responsibilities kind of prevented him from coming back as a coach for us this year. And then it's always great to have Woodbridge grads back. And Megan Woods is, we're amending the supplemental contract because she was posted as an assistant coach, but she really should have been a head coach. So she's coaching the 7th grade team, and then another Woodbridge grad, Alyssa Speakman, is coaching the 8th grade team. They'll support each other, but they're both head coach positions.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Laydick?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Brings us to recommendations. A bus route, bus routes 2024, 2025 school year. Get a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second. Discussion.
Per our board policy, this is just to approve our routes, and we just ask our families to be patient as our kids are getting to learn their drivers and start and end times.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Laydick?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Leads us to the OSBA's annual business meeting, delegates and alternative delegates. I'll do it. I'll stay on as the alternate as well, unless somebody else wants to step up. All right. Scott and I will take those positions. Make a motion, please?
I'll move. I'll second.
No discussion? Roll call, please. Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Laydick?
Aye.
Brings it to C, GCL Educational Services LLC, the LEAP program for the 2024, 2025 school year. Get a motion, please?
I'll move. I'll second.
Discussion.
This is for a student that is receiving services that exceeds the resources we have.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Laydick?
Aye.
D, I Am Boundless Inc. Agreement, 2024, 2025 School Year. I will move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
This is a provider that we've worked with for a number of years, Koyonia. They serve our students with disabilities at the high school, transition services, and I Am Boundless bought them. So same services, same staff, just a different name now.
Roll call, please. Mr. Laydick?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
E, Educational Service Center of Northeast Ohio, Audiology and/or Hearing Impairment Agreement, 2024, 2025 School Year. Get a motion, please?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
So this is not for an audiologist. It's for a teacher of a deaf, and somebody, unfortunately, doesn't have that position. So the audiologist diagnoses and treats, and then the teacher of the deaf supports educational resources in teaching.
Roll call, please. Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Laydick?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
F, the Jefferson Agreement for the 2024, 2025 School Year. Going to get a motion, please?
I'll move.
Second. Discussion.
This is for our Virtual Academy. It's for the online portal curriculum, and then talking with our learning management system.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Laydick?
Aye.
Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
G, ABA Outreach Services Behavioral Services Agreement, 2024, 2025 School Year. Get a motion, please?
I'll move.
One second. Discussion.
This is for a registered behavior technician, so it's bringing an intensive support into the school to work with a student that qualifies for that service.
Roll call, please. Mrs. Effernan?
Aye.
Mr. Carlo?
Aye.
Mr. Laydick?
Aye.
Mrs. Martin?
Aye.
Brings us to the last public participation. I do not have any at this time, and I will move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.[1788.24]